I didn't even touch it.
Okay, I can mute if you wanna say something bad.
Well, it is six o'clock. It appears we have to call on uh, call the meeting of the double township zoning board of appeals to order. First item, and so it's the best part, the pledge all agents, you join me. All right, roll call. Uh, Mr. Hicks is excused. Uh, Ms. Parr.
Here.
Mr. Kalzelnbeck.
Here.
Mr. Corey.
Here.
Ms. Cuscarella.
Present.
Uh, Mr. McConnell.
Uh, I don't know if he emailed me and emailed everybody, but he said he wasn't gonna be here, so.
I'm sorry?
Oh, I said, I don't know if remember if he emailed everybody, but he did tell me that he wasn't gonna be here.
Okay. Excited approval of the agenda.
So good. Support.
Roll call vote on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? You're none, agenda is set. Are there any citizen comments uh, today for items that are not on this agenda? In other words, items that are not for case V twenty-three, four thirteen involving the property forty-nine oh one West Saginaw? Anything else?
No.
No.
No, not for that one. You guys are.
We're two away then?
Yep.
Okay.
You're none, move on. Uh, correspondence, Ben, do we have any correspondence on this?
No correspondence.
None, good. Approval of the minutes of the January tenth meeting. I have a couple of very minor edits, none of which by themselves I would bring up at this, just enough to make me bring up as a group.
No, okay.
And they are very minor. Um, on page two, at the bottom line, there should be a space between the words by and arcing.
Okay.
On page three, at the bottom of the page, it says Chair Hicks, it should say Chair Arcing.
Right.
On page four, in the middle of the page, there's two voice votes, carrot six to oh, pronouncements, only the last one is necessary. And that's it.
Okay.
So with those amendments, I would I would move to approve the minutes as presented.
Support.
Motion on floor has support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most. You're none, minutes are approved. So before us, we have case V dash twenty-three dash zero four dash thirteen uh, containing six variance requests at forty-nine oh one West Saginaw Highway. We have addressed some of this before. Uh, before we get into the public hearing, Matt, would you please present the petition?
All right, uh, so as you, as you said, we kind of looked at this one before, uh, initially, you guys uh, heard a request to uh, verify that zoning industry was correct, that this thing would, or this uh, use would need to go through uh, special land use permit, which, which you agreed with, that since there is no window and it's already been abandoned for a while, that and also it was a financial institution and not a restaurant, that it doesn't really count, ask go through special lands permit, which makes them have to bring the entire property up to modern compliance, because it's in the West Sagal- West Saginaw Overly District, uh, which is between Elmwood and uh, Waverly for this part of Saginaw, just because the, the lots were all developed prior, mostly prior to uh, when we had zoning regulations. Uh, so now that, now that the applicant knows that he has to get variances for what he doesn't, uh, what he can't do, uh, I tried to group them best best I could, so that you could kind of envision them together. Uh, number one and two are essentially the same ones. So number one, the variance he's asking for, they have seven foot of grass uh, between the sidewalk and the parking lot. We generally require a ten foot wide separation, which is number two, and then also require a ten foot wide landscaping strip, which is number one. He's just asking to plant the exact same plantings that you would plant in a ten foot space, but just have it be seven foot wide. And the reason for he's giving is basically that they have uh, the, the ingress off of uh, off of Theo here. And he doesn't, he doesn't wanna encroach on that in any way, if he, if he doesn't have to, so he just wants to keep the current level of uh, pavement and just can't keep it as is. Uh, variance number three, kind of similar, uh, so he's required green belts uh, ten feet wide on both street frontages. Uh, he has all of his green spaces kind of in the road right away, which as a township, we don't actually have jurisdiction over, so he can't plant in this area. Uh, most likely wouldn't have issue kind of planting in these two areas, but over here, there's a storm drain, so he's asking for permission just not to have to plant uh, trees in that area uh, for that reason. Uh, variance number four, uh, he submitted a uh, conceptual plan from his engineer that had perpendicular spaces here, uh, uh, Gary Bosick, the planning director and I kind of all talked and said that the uh, kind of like existing uh, ankle parking works better for what he's trying to do, but that kind of cuts into the desired width of the drive-through lane and also the, the space between the drive-through lane and parking. Uh, so we don't really have an issue, basically, he's, he's asking for uh, variance to have a fifteen foot wide uh, travel lane instead of a twelve, or sorry, twelve foot instead of fifteen. Uh, neither of us had any issue with that. Um, number five, kind of sent, again, sort of related, uh, in parking lots that are not connected, as these are not, there is an entrance here in Saginaw, there's an entrance here in Saginaw, but the A and W and uh, crack chicken lots are not actually connected, so you would, we require a five foot wide buffer, but not buffer, but a green space in between. He's asking not to do that because of that would push the travel, push the parking into the travel lane, again, and he'd have to ask it for even bigger variance there. Uh, as, as it exists, since this is just another commercial use, uh, like again, Gary and I discussed it and didn't really see a huge issue with that one. Uh, and then variance number six, he's just basically asking for, he would require a concrete curbing around the entire perimeter, if it's in the, the site of uh, of the public. Uh, more like, he doesn't have a a, a necessarily listed reason, it's more or less just that he doesn't wanna impact what he's already got built and uh, thinks that with the storm drain here, that he's not, that the curbing's there to basically create stop the water running off into their properties, and with the storm drain here, he doesn't feel it's necessary. Uh, so it's basically the, the six variances, I've kind of spoken with the applicant, trying to have him explain to you you know, what the problems exist, he's gonna kind of read here, but I just said, and uh, basically just explain why, that what, allowing him these variances and then to go forward with the special land use permit process, which will still be required, so the neighbors will get another uh, public hearing for this, and then, and then eventually uh, be the township board that would make a final decision on whether or not this guy could get a special answer for a drive-through. Uh, just basically, yeah, like looking for these variances, so his engineer can prepare, prepare a new site plan for special land use permit. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has about the specific variances, so.
Let's go through.
Yeah, Matt, you were explaining, you were talking about variance request around the curb, the curbing on the site. Can you just remind me and the board why, what the intent was behind that requirement?
Yeah, I believe, yeah, I believe it's, yeah, it is like storm water runoff, so it's a, they, they put in like a, you know, like a foot, foot tall curbing around the outside, this one does not have that, it just goes right into the it like, so we, we've sort of waved it for other ones, but they were ones, the industrial properties that were off, off the beaten path and stuff, so it, this one, like I said, this, this is one of the more iffy ones, the other ones are semi, in my opinion, justifiable, but yeah, this one's sort of iffy.
There are issues on the site with stormwater runoff.
Uh, not that I'm aware of, but no.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Matt, one question from the chair, um, is the storm drain in the uh, top right of the property that's shown here, is that the only one?
Uh, I believe so, yes, I believe that is the only, I think there, there might be some in the street nearby to that outside, that's the only one.
One other question, um, would the uh, would there be just one direction of traffic throughout the?
Yeah, that's, that's the, the plan, is that this would be, this would be an entrance only, uh, the, both of these would be entrance only as it is, uh, and then, yeah, just, and then this would be exit only, that is, yep.
I guess what I was wondering is, uh, why do we have to have two entrances? Uh, it seems to me because the one on Saginaw Street is one entrance, why do we have to have two entrances on Theo?
And that is something they could, that we could talk to them about.
Because that would almost be uh, superfluous, that you could have the exit on Theo and have the entrance on Saginaw.
Yep, uh, he would, like, he would need permission from the road commission to close that, but otherwise, yeah, I mean, I don't, I, I, I think that, no, I think you're right, that, that could work. But, so yeah, if you, you took that into account on the, on that variance number three, that, you know, maybe that, maybe that driveway doesn't need to be right there, and he could just come in off of Saginaw and then exit onto Theo.
And if you, if you do that, it requires folks that are coming from the Theo direction.
So to go off, yeah, yeah, to make a left turn, yeah.
Make a left turn.
No, not that one.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I don't know.
But to this side would be.
Yeah, that, yeah, I don't know, that's, yeah.
Any other questions for Matt, for staff?
Is the only other, the chairman, the only other question I have is, essentially all we're doing, if you approve the variance, there's, there's keeping it as it.
Yes, exactly, so it, like, he's got to, like, repave it and all that stuff, but yeah, essentially, just allowing it to be as is, and then he allows him to go forward to the special land use permit process, and yep. Exactly.
It allows basically non-conforming users to protest for a different use.
Exactly, and I, I, I couldn't come up with the exact numbers, but I know previous zoning ordinances, we've sort of allotted for, like, kind of reductions on certain things, and then when, when they redid the ordinance in twenty seventeen, apparently that stuff didn't get carried through, so previous ordinances had sort of reduced, uh, probably would have had things to, to reduce the setbacks for some of this stuff in accordance with the fact that it is.
We don't still, I thought we still had that on Saginaw, maybe it was between Waverly and one.
Uh, yes, so they, yes, the really district is between Waverly and Everly, is my understanding that previous zoning ordinances before twenty seventeen had. So this one just says it has to be brought up to modern standards, previous ones also had relief. So for instance, like our current ordinance, if, if uh, if, if a lot is too narrow compared to what we would normally approve, like, we reduced the side yard setbacks in accordance, and this one, apparently, when the the person prepared, that's something we could look at too, Gary and I talked about that, that introducing some of that stuff back into it, but previous ordinances would have been it's possible this seven foot thing would have been perfectly fine, because it's, it's reduced, but yeah, as the ordinance sits now, you need the variance for it.
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved. Support.
All in favor? I have most, you're none, public hearing to hear case V dash twenty-three dash zero four dash thirteen is, is open. Uh, I would ask the, the petitioner, if uh, come to the podium and, and uh, present his case. And first, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Wayal Hadad, my address is fifty-eight thirty-four River Ridge Drive, Lansing, four eight nine one seven.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm glad to be here tonight after this meeting been postponed twice. But they say good things come to those who wait. I've been coming to the planning department for two years now, trying to find a solution to use my existing drive-through, where I met Mr. Posit one time. He discussed the matter with Matt, where they told me, I thought you will have three variances, and it's an old building, I don't see why not. You could try in court. This building used to be a bank, which they had three drive-through lanes. And I am asking for one pickup window to make it more convenient for my customers and to compete with the national names around me, where most of them, if not all, have a drive-through on Saginaw Highway. After the bank, this building was sold to an insurance company. And if they kept, continue using the drive-through, I won't be here tonight. We submitted a site plan for the drive-through and was told that it is adequate to apply for a permit, but we might have issues with the landscape. Not what with the drive-through, but the landscape, which we have a large area in the back of the building that could be used for this purpose, as Mr. Posit told me. It's difficult to apply new codes to an old existing building in, in a well-established district, which will limit my space and make it very tight. I'm asking for your help and support for the second time by approving my request. And would like to thank Matt for all the time and assistance during this process. And thank you for hearing me.
Wait, hang on for a second, um, board members, I guess, uh, need your guidance on how to proceed, uh, we can treat each of these six variance requests separately and put them each through any tests, or we can treat them holistically and have him provide justification for this, that. I've seen the board goes different ways depending on how, about different cases, it's really up to us, uh, it's not up to me. Um, I'd like to see a question.
Yeah, I agree, I think all the issues have to do with the existing, you know, circumstances, you know, due to the same circumstances, so.
Doing the opposition to that, thank you for the guidance, board members, I would say, Mr. Wayne, you have this, yes, document, if you could address uh, the, the, the criteria listed on this page, you have to do uh, uh, you have to demonstrate all of the following, uh, B one through B five, and then uh, you need to meet uh, a one of C one or two, uh, one, two, three, or four. So all of, all of B and one from C has to be a justification for these variances.
Okay, so as he, I think Matt, he did better job than I tell, I will do an explaining the matter. He said, like, one and two, as he mentioned to me, that it's the same, that now we have seven foot grass, and we could grow the same plant on seven as well as we could do it on ten. If we're gonna make it ten, that means we're gonna push the parking lot to the back. Pushing the parking lot to the back will make it closer to the entrance or exit on both sides of Saginaw and Theo, which might, you know, you know, you only have to do it to figure it out, may, might be a little tight for cars, even people who walk into the parking lot, there's some people from the neighborhood, they go walking into the parking lot, going to Saginaw, to the bus stop, so it will make it a little tight for safety even.
So for your, um, you're arguing, I assume that, uh, the variance request is due to unique circumstances peculiar to the property and not to the general neighborhood condition, th- these are uh, the, the, you're asking for this stuff because of the situation you found on the property?
I'm asking for what?
You're asking for these variances because of the, the circumstances you found on the.
Yeah, I mean, you know, like, basically, this, I mean, as I said, this building, it has a three drive-through when the bank used it, so not just one three. They never had a safety issue for the, for the cars, even people who walk, so it was well, well done back then. But now because of the new codes, and this is an old building, to apply a new code, maybe you could apply it to Grantland, you know, newer area, where everything is new, but to apply new codes onto already existing building, we could push this, push that, that will be so tight, I'm not sure, even the engineer said it will be for safety, I don't think will be adequate, you know? As he mentioned, you know, what I'm asking for, to keep it as it.
I assume you're also asking for uh, relief because this variant, the variances would not cause a substantial adverse effect on properties in the immediate area or be contrary to the public interest, I assume that's also your position.
Yeah.
Did, you haven't heard any, none of your neighbors have said, no, this is a terrible plan?
No, I, I only saw one neighbor, he mentioned something about, we put, uh, I haven't seen him really, but we put light around the building, and it was not on him, so we moved the light, you know, flat, so it will be, you know, down, yeah? And we're gonna put, we haven't turned it on yet. We tested a few times, but we're gonna put like a cap or skirt or something, so even take it down to the floor.
Yeah.
So that's the only thing that.
Yeah, like, existed, so he, but he put uh, lights on the side of his building that don't have, we, we, don't have what we require, which is called a full cutoff, where you put the slants on the side, so it just shoots the light down at the building. Uh, that's something that would be reviewed during the special end use permit and site plan review, but yeah, as it currently sits, he doesn't have those on there, it's in the non-compliance, so he won't need to do that, that's kind of, uh, not necessarily relevant to the variance, but he is, we are aware of that problem, and he will have to fix that.
So I assume you're also arguing, uh, that, uh, the need for this variance is not self-created, these, these are circumstances that presented themselves to you, you, you didn't cause the uh, setbacks to be small, uh, to, to be the way they are, to be less than what you need.
I mean, yeah, it already exists, I, like, like we say, if it's working, why play with it? It's been like that for thirty years, no safety issues, no even rainwater issues, no, I mean, if it's good, the building is good, the area, the drive-through was good for maybe thirty years. And now, we, to do changes, you, you, we might end up with, you know, some kind of problem that that, you know, new problem that will arise.
Let's go down the list here, so similarly, I assume you're also arguing that the variance is not contrary to the purposes of the ordinance, uh, that it, uh, is in the spirit of the ordinance. Uh, I also assume you're arguing that, uh, you're asking for this not based on the fact that similar uh, non-conformances are enjoyed by other properties, that, that those aren't criteria, that you're asking for it based on justification of your own property, not.
Yes, yes.
And finally, I want to ask you to take another look at section C on this page. If you can see, it has two paragraphs here, and then two other paragraphs up here. And this is where I'd like a little more directions for you about which of these you think applies best to your application, you have to be one of these four criteria. Take a, take a few seconds to translate and follow it. First of all, I think your best case is the first one, but it's your case.
Yeah, we go with, you know, can, can ask, you know, the, the show, you have four options, can I call a friend? So my friend is my wife, are you my friend? Yeah, I will take one.
I have a couple of other questions I'd like to ask you, um. You're asking for relief from having curb around all of the parking area. Do, do I take that to mean you don't wanna have any curb at all, or are you willing to, are you willing to have a curb in parts, parts of it, and in parts, you'd be more clear about what parts?
I, I mean, we're already like, on the, uh, there's a, on the back of the building, there is a fence. Actually, there's two fences, one is by A and W, and one in the back.
Yeah, he's referring to the, the, the curbing on the parking, like.
On the parking, yeah, that's no problem, but we already have, like, he explained that curbing is to wrap up the, you know, like, you know, like an edge for the stable, so we already have in the back, on, you know, between us and the house, there is a curb, curb being, but maybe, uh, I don't know how many inches are, you know, back in the days, but, you know, now maybe it's higher, but we could do any curbing that it doesn't really affect the, you know, the car, the flow of uh, traffic, we could do that if it's, you know, durable.
Probably a six inch high curb.
Yeah.
Um, I, I understand that your, your, your biggest uh, concern about the curbing is that it will be draining around the existing drain?
Yeah, we, we have the drain in the front, and we have the drains, like some kind of drain in the back, in the grass area. So now we have curbing here that I see, they, they did, maybe they did it between us and the neighbor years ago, to try grab up the back area, so water will keep up in our grass area, but not in the front.
As your architect or engineer told you that that would be a problem, if there were curbing there for drainage purposes?
I don't really, I don't think he taught me that, no. But the more you do that tighter, it becomes, it becomes.
Okay, moving on, one other question, do you intend to keep the fence on the, what is that, the west side of the property?
Yeah, we have two, yeah, one here between us, between on the west and the south, yeah, we have fences on both.
The, 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 the parking on the west, between the two rows of parking, one yours, one of your neighbors, that fence would stay?
Yeah, yeah, so it exists.
I offer that to board members, as possible uh, under the age of the fact that there would be no green strip there under this variance. So those are my questions and the points I wanted to raise, are there any other questions for the applicant, uh, from board members?
No, there's no possibility of a green strip, I mean, there's no.
Yeah.
Sorry, I couldn't.
There's not any extra land, it's, there's possibility of a green strip.
Mr. Riley, do you have anything further for us?
Thank you, I'm a standstill, having me again.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak to this matter? Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Name and address.
Uh, name is David Kessler.
Let's go to the mic, please.
Name is David Kessler, address is six twenty-four Iris Avenue.
Uh,
my concern with this property here and other properties around me, and it started when they put up a light at Crack Chicken, and when they turned it on for the first time, and you know where I live now, it just blinded me like unmingling, freaking god, unbelievable.
You live by the A and W, correct?
What the?
You live by the.
Yeah, right by.
Yep, so you're, yep.
So that was just like, wow, okay, A and W is bad enough, okay, uh, and I've that's different, but not really, it's all the same of the light pollution that's over in my whole area over there, between Crack Chicken, A and W, and uh, one north, all right? My house there at nighttime just gets lit up like you would not believe. Uh, somebody called me today from the planning commission, who was very nice, I forget the gentleman's name. Uh, he said he's gone out, talked to, not talked, but looked at the properties in question, and he's gonna be doing something about it, you know, I mean, fingers crossed that something happens, okay? Uh, like the gentleman said, you know, taking one of the lights and moving them down, if and when it happens, I don't know, but I'll tell you, it hasn't happened yet, okay? And the lights are still pointed like this, a couple of days ago, I know they were on, and because I wanted to make sure when I came and talked about everything, I was kind of familiar with what's going on, okay? Uh, A and W, like I say, their lights are just unbelievable, anyway. Uh, so that's my big issue, number one issue about that, okay? Number two, as I don't know, hopefully we all know, that, that area there, when it rains and everything, when you go down to Theo down there, it just gets puddled and pooled, just like unbelievable, okay? So about the curbing, like you said, I'm wondering if the curbing, if somehow, if we didn't put it in there, it did something that would help with the drainage or something along that line, so the flooding, that would not happen, okay? Uh, that's another concern that I have going on with that. Um, other concerns that I have is that it would increase the trash that we have in that area now, I don't know how many fold. Uh, I know you folks probably don't know, but my neighbor over here took pictures, I don't know if you'd like to see the pictures or not, but the amount of trash in our area on our fence lines is just absolutely incredible, and adding another one there is just gonna make things even worse. Uh, as far as his variance goes, as far as I'm saying, is what he wants to do with the property, everything else is fine, because it looks like it's the same as A and W, so I don't have a problem with that, like I say, the curbing, the lighting, big time, the trash is another one, and then with the extra power that's gonna be generated now at that place, if you blow up the property between A and W or not, there is a freaking transformer on top of one of those poles there. Every year, that thing glow. Every year, that thing glow, blows, okay? And it blows power for that whole strip down between us, neighbor can come by, he knows, okay? It goes out completely, okay? Why is it blow, I don't know, I'm not an electrical guy, okay? But if we add more power, more, all that kind of stuff to it, is it gonna increase the possibility of that transformer boom? Instead of once a year being put out for who knows how long, or twice a year, or whatever the case may be. So anyway, those are my concerns, okay, about that, but my big concern is the light pollution all around that area. That is just coming through, just unbelievable, and I have nighttime pictures, if you want to see those, too.
Those are all valid and real concerns, and I, and I appreciate you bringing them here, um. The, the vast majority of them are beyond our purview, uh, the lights and the other, those, those that come into his zoning. His zoning, zoning variance requests, but I bet their uh, aspects of the site plan, uh, approval that the site. The, the planning commission will want to hear from you on that, and uh, Matt can speak to that further if you have any.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah, I, I kind of talked with both of the people I saw in the audience beforehand, and they know that. I told them that this was an appropriate place to put their cover, on, on the record. They, they know that, like, if, if this goes through, there will be a special land use permit process, where those will be very pertinent questions, and now. I'll make sure when I send out the special land use permit report, if it goes through. Uh, that they get the minutes for this meeting, so they, they know that the couple of neighbors nearby have issues.
Uh, yeah, man, on the, the issue with the power. Do you know, has um, BWL been notified about issues there?
I can bring that to their attention, so actually, uh, it's kind of interesting, so I believe it was Peter Mensah, the economic developer there, was actually. One that uh, called this gentleman today. He, he found, so the lights in question on A and W are actually on BWL light poles in the right of way. Which we don't have jurisdiction over, and he's trying to look into that, like, how they got up there, if they're BWL lights, or if they're A and W lights. So we can, I can certainly uh, tell Peter to inquire about that transformer issue as well, when he's communicating with them.
Hmm, that's interesting.
Yeah, yeah, there, I guess the other, I mounted on the actual poles in the right of way, so he took pictures today, and he's. Uh, got, uh, got a contact, he's gonna follow some leads, but like you said, it might, might take some time to figure out exactly who to call, that he's, he's.
That's what he said, be patient, and so, he said, I'll be patient, yeah.
Yep, there, there might be some light relief at the end of that for you.
I'll be great, great light relief, I like that, yes, light relief.
And I would, I would also say that uh, if this becomes a functioning business, um. Maybe the trash problem won't be ameliorated too, because there'll be somebody there policing it, so, with an interest in making sure that it looks decent. And like, picking up the trash.
Yep, and then there is an ordinance, I mean, if it was, was bad after the restaurant went in, there is, there's a blight ordinance that we could, or that a, the building department couldn't enforce on him, if, if, if. If trash became a problem again.
Your comments about the curb though are something we can consider here, and uh. We are.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for you?
That's it for me, folks, thank you for listening to me.
Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Craig Condit, uh, six one seven Theo Avenue. Like he stated, most of my concerns aren't to what we're here for tonight. That, so I'm not even gonna bring those up for the most part, but one concern is traffic. There's gonna be an increase in traffic down Theo. West side, you know, has become a drag strip, you can hear bikes racing nightly. Now, um, there's an increase down Theo, because there's streetlights on Theo, the adjacent streets don't have streetlights. We have no sidewalks, but we have lots of kids, and they play in the street. And an increase in traffic, not gonna be a good combination. Now, so I don't know if maybe speed bumps or something like that.
That is a county right away, isn't it?
That is a county right away, uh, during special land use permit, site plan review, and we, we could. Bring that to the road commission's attention.
Yeah, a lot of people use that area for a short, not having to go through the main light.
Yep, it's, it, yeah, it's kind of weird, uh, we don't have any jurisdiction over the, there are areas outside of the yellow lines, so that's the road commission, uh. We could, I could bring that up with them, just see what they say, but like I said, ultimately, it's gonna be their decision.
Yeah, but uh, my other concerns really have nothing to do with that, other than the lighting. Yeah, the lighting is an issue. Yeah, I, I've shown Matt pictures of that night. That, and they have been off for some time now, so that's great.
So tells you the planning mission's gonna hear enough about this where they're gonna want to address it, the, the lighting issue.
Yeah, that's just a non-negotiable, I mean, he would, he would need a variance to not follow that, so he's not asking for that, yeah.
Yeah. Um, as for the street search. Big difference between townships and cities, the cities control their streets, townships don't. But uh, that can bring it to the attention of the road commission, that's probably the, all we can do, and, and get their, any response. Uh, from them back to you personally.
Or, or, or when you, if, if this goes through and you get that special land use permit process, you could call the road commission and express that directly too.
Alright.
We have their action as well.
Okay.
Cause, cause they get the, they get the notice basically at the same time you do, so.
Okay. But uh. That's pretty much it for me, I mean, because the other stuff really doesn't have anything to do with issues that I have. Alright, thank you for your time.
Anybody else?
Lives in the township.
Alright, um, hearing nobody else has to come forward, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? opposed? So, board members. You have six variances before you, um. Some of them are more tight than others, taken together than others, and um. You heard the justification by applicant for them. What is your pleasure, the, you have some sample motions in the back of your package, courtesy provided by Matthew, um, you can uh. Make any of those uh, singly or in combinations. That suit your purpose, you, you, your motion. We can also discuss this first before anybody makes a motion, um. How do folks feel about the uh. Variance on the. West side of the property, the parking, there was no screen back, it's no red belt on that side, there's a fence there now, but. You could make the fence staying a requirement of the variance.
And, and just to clarify, it wouldn't be a green belt, it'd just be like five foot of grass is what they're required essentially.
I didn't know what else to call.
Uh, no, just in our ordinance, like the green belt is the stuff you put on the, the street front, and that's, that's, yeah, you got it.
Okay, five foot strip of grass.
Okay, sorry, I mean.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
Um, I guess I don't, uh, just generally, I think most of these variance requests. Um, makes sense because of the small, well, and the nature of the property. I think the only one I really have question with is number six. On, um, the curbing and whether or not that's feasible.
That's where I am at.
Given comments that there are some issues, and I know that neighborhood in different areas does have issues with flooding. That may help alleviate, I don't know if there's been a strong argument that that cannot be done. I know there was a request not to do it, but I just don't know if it's not feasible and still making. I mean, it, it seems, including the curb, is, would still make the property. Usable for the purpose of wouldn't inhibit that.
Said that he would do it in the back.
And if there's a reason it can't be done all the way around, I don't know if I understood that then, um.
Yeah, I think that was the only one. He's, he's here kind of for like, a, a couple of them, so you might as well ask for everything kind of situation.
Sure.
Yep.
Yeah, no, no offense taken. One could be a, there's not a strong reason why you couldn't accommodate that.
I, I, I would need, I personally need some sort of architecture or engineered justification for it.
Yep.
Um, and I'm just not getting it yet.
But the other five, I am comfortable with those requests.
I agree. As my, is that where the board is, you want to, can we cut to the chase and zero in on that?
I'm happy to make a motion to that effect.
Um, I'm moving that we approve the variance requested in case number B dash twenty-three dash zero four thirteen. For, um, I know, request one through five. And not approve for variance request six.
Because he is.
Because he is not, yes, uh.
With the variance.
Yes, 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 go, you can finish that for me, sorry. Um, yeah, because he has met the, um.
He's not demonstrated.
He's demonstrated the, um, he meets all the criteria one through five, and that he has. Met requirement one, um, of part C.
Support, motion on the floor, it has support, all in favor, this will be a, uh, no, this will be a roll call vote, sorry. Discuss, Carol.
Support.
Counting back.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Arking, that's me, I thought yes as well. Uh, the motion carries, uh, Matt, please advise the applicant of next steps.
Alright, um, so yeah, we'll, we'll, I'll award you that approval tomorrow, and then, uh, yeah, just have to get with your, uh. Engineer to prepare a, a site plan for special ages permit, as soon as we get that, we'll get you, uh, that public hearing, and then. Final site plan review, uh, due to the size of your site will just be in the house, it'll be a little quicker. So, yeah, I'll, I'll send you all that stuff tomorrow, but yep, you're, you're good to go on the. First five variances, then denied on number six, so you have also, I'll, I'll add over to it tomorrow, thanks for coming, good seeing you.
Welcome to new business.
Hey, I've got a lot.
Want to ask?
Oh, it's, 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 yeah, it's a seasoning, it's a, it's, it's, it's a reference to the seasoning.
They're also gonna have eleven his grocery there, too.
Well.
And, and I actually went in.
Chicken, right, and there's another one on, like. And they put like white powder on it, hence crap, right? And so that's why it's called crack chicken, so you get a chicken finger, okay, and they put some types of seasoning, white powder.
Yeah.
Crack chicken.
And the, yeah, and the grocery store thing is a little scary than it sounds like, I actually went in there like last week, it's just, it basically is gonna have like a, a shelf of, of things you can buy. It's not, it's not like a full grocery store.
Uh, let's, let's get back to the agenda, please, um. Next item, old business, do we have any old business?
Uh, we do not.
Do we have other business?
Uh, that we do not.
Do we have uh, upcoming, uh?
Not that I am aware of, uh, like, but basically, uh, Mr. Hadad has been the only kind of variance adjacent thing we've really been. Speaking at the last couple of months, uh, uh, but yeah, I will, we'll probably. Try to have another meeting for the end of the year, but if not, but cause we'll see next year. We're, we're required to have two, and this is number two, so.
That brings us down to staff comments, and uh, do you have any staff comments?
Uh, I don't have any, I'm happy to answer questions, yeah, about anything, but yeah, I don't have any, uh, anything that kind of ZBA related to, to discuss.
How's Gary doing?
Uh, he's doing better, a lot better, he's, he's back. More or less full-time, like he was kind of working half-days there for a while, but he's, he's been uh, in the office full-time, and he's. Kind of working on maybe, hopefully finishing the master plan, and then looking at retirement, I think, but, yep, he's, he's back, and I think. About ninety percent healthy now, he's got a couple of things to figure out, but.
He's retiring, he's healthy now.
Alright, I'll tell him, okay, so I'm, I'm making note that, no retirement for Gary, alright.
Please pass one of our best wishes.
Yep, I will do that.
Let me, uh, let me get to that.
We can chat, yep.
Are there, uh, are there any board comments, board member comments? You're not, any comments from the audience?
I can, I can.
Right there.
Well, when you were at property, yeah, did you notice one of those curves were at that home zone?
Which, on the side, the, uh, no, I don't, I didn't see that.
Because that's all grass through there.
Right.
That's asphalt all the way through there.
Yeah.
And at that fence.
There's, there's curb, I don't know, okay.
Fence, post go right through the asphalt.
Okay.
On the south side?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have, you know, fight, keep the water away from that north side of the house.
Okay.
Grass and have a asphalt, just.
Yeah, like, I mean, you can't kind of see it, like the parking lot, it's sort of, it doesn't have like a natural, like, cause yeah, just the grass took over a part of it, I think, is, is, yeah. But yeah, that's all, all be reviewed, like, he'll be required to put like a, a, a buff, a landscape buffer there, and then whatever. Yeah, and that's not something, yeah, and I kind of, I actually told him that you had had that concern, it's not something we can require, but I told him. Sometimes it makes sense to just say, yes, I'll do it, to kind of smooth things over, but yeah.
That could be a site plan bargain.
Yeah, yes, site plan bargain kind of thing, yep, exactly. Cause it's, it's kind of like, the, the special land use permit is more that way, where it, it's, it's, is it gonna cause problems to neighbors? If, if that fence will ameliorate that problem, you know, he can agree to that, to sort of assage their concerns, but yep.
Get a notice of the site plan view?
He'll get noticed, so he won't get noticed for the, so the site plan interview is, will be the last step, uh, special land use permit. Both of those gentlemen will get a, a notice in the mail, all the same people, well, uh, it's a, it's a public hearing. There's a slightly like less of the hill to climb in the ZBA, they just basically have to prove that they. Need the conditions, as opposed to the ZBA, to prove like why you shouldn't follow the rules, it's a little higher step, but. Yeah, it's essentially, it'll be another public hearing, and then in, uh, the final thing would be just, uh, site plan review, but that, that would not. Have a public hearing, because it's, uh, anything lost in two acres, we just review in the planning department. But it would be reviewed by engineering, uh, road commission, drain commission, all that jazz.
Boy, you put it that way, sure.
Let's look at the picture I got today, of trash that built up since the weekend. And it blows from.
Yeah.
Oh, more, but it's horrendous.
Is it on your side of the fence, or there's? Oh, comes. So that's why you're saying it privacy, that's what.
That's so silly.
You sure of the white problem?
Yeah, he is.
Bring those, bring those pictures to the site plan.
Yeah. Yeah.
I guess you just have to stay in touch with the township.
Involved was the, yeah, that one. Okay, yeah, we should. Yeah, we can, yeah, yeah.
Sure. I know, I see the power, I guess, I thought you might get a site plan review notice, but I guess you don't.
No, they, they get some special name, there is, there is a site lane involved, but it's just not the final approval. But so the final one will be that public hearing, but.
Oh, the question I had, Rob, like, I've never lived on a street that goes through three.
Do you mind if I adjourn the meeting? I'm not, I'm not adjourned the meeting, if anybody.
Okay.
And I both do adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Want to adjourn the, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're none, uh, opposed, you're none, for adjourned here? Sorry, it's been a long day.
Our street goes, my address is six twenty-four. Two houses down is five hundred, another three houses down a post.